First item is a budget update with Michelle. I believe the slides are also in your packet.
Thank you, Mark. I'm wondering if I just can't see everyone. It doesn't look like any of our budget.
You're speaking, Michelle, we can't hear you.
Oh, Casey could hear me earlier. Uh-oh. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, I'm just fine.
Thanks, Casey. Travis, yeah?
Yes, can you hear us, Michelle?
I can hear you guys, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, fire away.
Okay, wonderful. So I was just wondering if our budget committee members had access to this? Because I couldn't see any of them in attendance, but I can't see everyone, so.
They're all here, Michelle.
Wonderful, I can't see you guys, so welcome, thank you for coming. This is our second budget update in a series of budget updates. And welcome, everyone, I'm glad that you could make it. On the situation page, it describes that we have a few more coming up before we propose the budget in April. We have, our next focus will be ester funds and the American Rescue Plan, and then our bond funds. And then we will propose the budget, like I said, in April. We can go ahead. Oh, Kim's scratching my email. Welcome. This is just a quick agenda of what we're going to review tonight. So again, I'm going to talk about our budget development process. You guys might get a little bit tired of that review, but I think it's important that we continue to share that. And for anyone who's viewing, they can also have a good understanding of that process. I put a little bit of information in here anchored back to our discussion around fund balance that came up at our last session. So we'll have a little bit to talk about there. Going to spend some time on our resource highlight. This session will be special revenue funds. And we're going to be looking specifically at the major state grants, our high school success, which is also known as Measure 98, and our student investment account dollars. And then the proposed budget preview. I think that's just a final wrap-up on what's coming next. So thank you, whoever's urging me along. We have the budget development process. Catch up. So this is a reminder about our budget development, how we utilize the budget committee in HSD. We definitely, we use the budget committee as key communicators and also for gathering input and discussion on the budget. Our local budget law requires that we provide a proposed budget document and we publish the, that meeting where that happens in a very formal way. And that date will be April 26th, we're working up to that gradually. And we can schedule, excuse me, additional meetings as needed for consensus of the committee. And then the budget committee will approve the budget and it will move towards adoption in June. We'll begin implementation on July 1st of this year. I think it's important to remember that it's not the role of the budget committee to set staffing levels or manage programs. Those are all happen within the appropriation levels that the budget committee sets. Different things like that will be maybe discussed during the budget committee meeting, but it is not the work of the committee to make those decisions. So I always like to put that reminder here. All right, move ahead. All right, so fund balance review and response. So a couple of questions came up at our last meeting. So how much does the Moody's rating requirement represent for HSD? So earlier this year, we had Moody's, which is a, it's basically a lender rating scale, re-rate our district based on new metrics that they use for K-12 across the nation. And when they did that, we are, we were downgraded by one level from, let me see here, it was from AA3 to single A1. And so the question came up, how much does the Moody's rating requirement represent for HSD? And so I did a little bit of research on that. And there, the best practices fund balance would be 5% to 15%. And for Hillsborough, that represents an additional two and a half to 27 and a half million dollars set aside to reach that. The Moody's rating scale goes from a C-A rating, which is the worst, which is having less than a 10% deficit for a fund balance. So that would be a really tragic year for an organization. And their maximum is a AAA standing, which would, you would need to carry a 25% or greater fund balance in order to meet that requirement. So being where we are going, just having one ratings change indicates that overall, our financial performance is strong, even though it's anchored back in part to fund balance. The other kind of question that came up was how to establish some service level stability? If we can't hit the Moody's rating requirement? If that's, if we broaden that question out to, you know, what makes sense in Hillsborough as far as maintaining service level over time? These are some different strategies that have been used across the state that may be something we can consider too as we move through our budget development process. So typically, one-time funds could be used to establish some type of reserve. For example, if we're significantly underspent in one year and we have a fund balance that's larger than we projected, then we could take that one-time money and spend it all right now. Or we could determine what type of reserve or be careful planning for the future. There's, we could establish an outside of the general fund account for that purpose. The state at this ODE level, they call theirs the Ed Stability Fund. And inside districts, they have various names for them as far as different levels, different types of funds that they set up. Another thing that we can do and have done. Do I need to stop? I can't see anyone.
You're good.
Okay, I'll keep going then. I need some, I need a helper to tell me the pause. Like I'm just speeding. So another strategy is earmarking for future spending, which could be PERS Reserve. We have done that in the past and that saved us from having to make some painful reductions over the course of two years. We kind of used them up incrementally as we tried to balance for Biennium. We could also set up a technology or curriculum reserve to help us align better with the requirements of Division 22 and those standards and keeping up with those if that's something that we wanted to look at for the future. Flexibility in our appropriations is key for that. If that's a strategy that we want to look at and I can continue to provide information for that as questions come up. Any more on fund balance? I have a ton of resources for anybody who's interested in drilling deeper. It's probably not everybody here tonight, but just reach out to me and I can follow up with you. All right, so our resource highlight today is our special revenue funds. And this is only a portion of the special revenue funds. When something falls under this group, it is restricted under grant agreements, which means we have to develop a plan for spending. We submit the plan and we spend to the plan. And then we can request reimbursement. Very few special revenue funds are front-loaded. They come with a lot of strings and accountability. The allocations for most are determined already by the state and federal government. So for the two that we're looking at tonight, they're driven by enrollment. So anytime we're going to have a fluctuation in enrollment, the allocation that we get from the state would be different. And that's the same for all districts across the state. The federal formulas are driven by different things. For example, IDEA is driven by the number of students we're serving in special education programs. And our Title I funds are based on student poverty levels. And again, that's the same for all districts across the state. And unfortunately, we don't often have the final numbers during our budget development period. If we did, that would be great. But sometimes we are using our past history to project our spending in the future and that includes staffing levels. So again, flexibility is pretty important. The expenditure assumptions are the same as the dental fund. So we're going to assume all of the same escalations for our staff costs, our supply costs and our technology and our services. And tonight, we're going to focus on high school success and our student investment account. All right. Okay, so this may look a little bit familiar. We have this very similar slide and you can see out of our total funds, all funds budget, our special revenue funds make up $72 million this year, which is different than in the past significantly because of the $18 million in ester funds that you see there. And that's kind of a one-time extra chunk of money, which will be there, but smaller in our planning moving forward. We have our student investment account at 13.6 and our high school success at $5,200,000. But what this does is it gives us a visual picture of when we're looking at our general fund budget, special revenue funds, and then how these, even though they're highly restricted and targeted and accountability is super high, they are significantly smaller than our regular operating budget. So I think that the pie chart, I hope illustrates that. Okay. And all of these things, you know, thanks to our partnership across the district, we're really focused on our continuous improvement plan. And Travis and the OSP team have done a great job identifying parallels within all of these restricted funds to support, important to us, and continuous improvement. So I, this isn't my area of expertise, but I just wanted to assure the budget committee that we have reviewed this, we continue to review it and make sure that our activities qualify both under the grants and under the strategic initiatives we have in place in the district.
Ask a question, Michelle? Sort of related to this slide and the previous one. I think pretty consistently IDEA is underfunded by the federal government. Is that pretty accurate?
Yeah, we get about 20 cents on the dollar of federal funds to the district spends from the general fund on those services per students.
So if it were fully funded, about how much would that look like? Or is that something you need to bring back to us?
Interesting question, Mark, and I'm happy to bring that back to you.
Thanks.
And remind me what IDEA is? IDEA? It's got a special education funds. It would be a huge number, it would be interesting to see.
Yeah, I'm guessing, you know, based on the previous pie charts, it would, there would be a substantial notch for that.
Yeah. If this wasn't being recorded, I would probably tell you it would be, need to be about $42 million.
Right.
Okay. We'll move off this slide, it's making me uncomfortable. All right, high school success facts. So this is actually cut and paste right off the ODE website, which is a link. You can get to it from the title of this slide. But it gives a good indication of the restrictions around these funds and how it came into place. And you're going to see in the next slide how it's kind of grown over time and kind of gained some traction and support. But the main focus areas, dropout prevention, career and technical education and college level opportunities. And those, those turn into services in their specific schools. It is targeted to secondary, which for us is high school. According to the rules of the grant, I want to say 15% of it can be used on, for incoming eighth graders. But that again is all determined by our office of school performance and that their team and planning for that. Thank you, Travis, for saying that. Okay, can we move ahead? So here's a quick history and you can see in 2017, 18, that was our first year. And the things that we added, everything from grad coaches, student support and wellness counselors. We added some core curriculum teachers, Avid and ninth grade intervention program, some curriculum, technology and staff and professional development. And all of those things came to just under $2.9 million in the first year. In 1819, it grew a little bit. The same as 1718 and just continued to extend on those same, on those same programs that were working for us. 1920, you can see a fairly significant jump. That was the first year that this grant was fully funded. And so each year, we would tend to plan as if it were going to be fully funded and then have to scale way back because it didn't, wasn't fully funded. So 2019, 20, when that occurred, we continued to add on and expand those programs. And 2021, continued expansion, slight growth. One of the challenges around the high school success funding is that it's coming to us at a set amount per student. It's $800 and it's tied directly to our enrollment. And so as our secondary enrollment fluctuates, the funds will fluctuate. But we know to continue the same service level and that our costs are going to grow. So that's going to provide some challenges for us as we move down the road with this grant. All right, move ahead. And we have 2122. These are the things that are currently adding up to 5.36 million. We have really a big focus on mental health and related services. We've increased counseling, personnel and district support as much as we can. So that's what we are funding with 2122. And as we move ahead. Move ahead, it's very similar. I almost combined the slides because the text is very much the same. There was an incremental increase in funding, but we are maintaining a lot of the very same things. What we're finding, I think, at the secondary level is that we are able to make adjustments within the grant, but still align with those core requirements of the grant, of the dropout prevention and career-related learning. All right. So now we're going to move on to the student student investment account facts. Again, that's a link right back to I'm stopping to pause because I'm hearing feedback, is someone talking? Or have a question? No, okay. Our student investment account fact, published by the Corporate Activity Tax Legislation in 2019. Huge effort, monumental effort, a lot of advocacy from all levels of education and education partners to get that legislation passed. We had early estimates of $16 million approximately every year. We did some really robust input sessions from staff, parents, students and the community and really informed all areas of spending. And again, continuing to anchor back to our continuous improvement plan as well. And the first year of the grant, 2021, we were only funded at 30%. So that, that was, that was a hard thing because we started out planning and get everybody excited about $16 million. And when it was just right around $5 million, really what that did in Hillsborough was pick up things that had to be reduced from the general fund because it was underfunded for that year. So that was the first year. And yeah, you can see that there. And then again, in 2122, at $9.3 billion for education in the state, our general fund was short again by just under $4 million. And so again, we went back to the well, find a sustainable source of funding for those services that were eligible under the grant, but we didn't want to see removed from our system. Please advance. Mike calls this the gold star slide, which makes me really proud. So I show it every opportunity and this might be the last time you get to see it. I added some fancy gray block out so that you can really focus in on our 9.3 billion level of the state school fund. And you can again see, it just illustrates that at that level, we were spending, we're just under $4 million short with the general fund for this current year. Okay, nobody's clapping, but that is a really good slide, but I'll let it go. Oh, thanks, Lisa, I see you. All right, that's enough, please advance. Okay. So this may look very, very familiar to everyone who was a part of our student investment account discussions. We worked a lot for the SIA areas that were dictated by the legislation and monitored by the Department of Education. We have class size reduction, student health and safety, learning time, which they call increased instructional time and well-rounded learning. So those are the SIA areas under the grants. And you can see the investments column, those are the things that we landed on in terms of values in HSD. So for class size and caseload, professional development, for mental and behavioral health, that was primarily what we funded in our first year of the grant, or mental health and mental and behavioral health services that we didn't want reduced from the general fund, after-school partnerships. And then we had some in curriculum and edutainment packages as well. Please advance. You can see our student investment account growing over time. We're super thankful for that. We had our original estimate, again, that's our community feedback went into that $16 million that we, we were going to receive based on that early estimate of the tax. What we actually received significantly last, and given the timeframe, definitely was very important to keep our student health and safety components in place throughout the 2021 school year. And so 2122, you can see that this is the first year that we're fully funded. And the majority of what was removed from the general fund of that almost $4 million is in class size and caseload reduction. We are maintaining and doubling down on student health and safety this year. We've increased our instructional time by adding some after-school programs in partnership with the city of Hillsborough. And we have some well-rounded learning performance as well. So moving ahead.
So, I'm sorry, I have a question, if you go back to your last slide? So if, if the second column was a prediction, third column was reality, fourth column then is a prediction for 2122, and do we know what the reality is going to be for 2122 yet?
That is our reality for this year. Thank you, Nancy. That is actually what we received, that's what we were told we were going to get and that is what we are receiving.
So is it redundant for me to ask them what happened in 2021? Because we predicted 16 and we only got five.
Yeah, the legislature only funded it. It was the brand, it's the brand-new cat taxes, as soon as that's over. They, they, it was a little pandemic, it was, there's a number of legalizations they like to use.
Okay, so that was, that was a legislative decision, that's why we only got five, which means everybody probably went down for their projections. And then they went back in and fully funded this program. So that's why we got 14.9 for 2126, is that correct? Got it, thank you.
Yes, yes, there was a lot of economic unsurety at the state level. The Department of Education was asked to go and revise their budget in late spring, summer of 2020, prior to 2021. And this was an area where they reduced greatly, but they didn't ever add that back. They maintained that lower level of funding for 2021. So it wasn't anything that Hillsborough School District did to make that happen. That's a state-wide decision. And then we have
All right, because we're coming up on the second year of the Biennium, it should be pretty stable for the upcoming year as well, right?
Yep. Stable with enough growth to support what we currently have in there. So we're going to continue on with what we have, we'll need to revise it and manage it a little bit differently, but everything will still fall into the same buckets, categories under the grant. So this is the final proportionality graph from SIA 4.0 in terms of values. And I just wanted to show that to you guys again. That's kind of a repeat slide, but I wanted to make sure that everyone going in to the next round has a clear visual of what that looks like.
So we're, so we're going to go, sorry, we're going to go spend 35% of whatever our effort is on trying to reduce class size. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
And I think that's making up for the whole, so if I use this slide, if you were talking to a legislator in a lobby, for example, and you use this slide, would it be sort of fair to say, we have to use almost 35% of what should be targeted investments to make up the hole in lack of funding from the general fund?
No, it's much greater than that, actually, as of the student health.
The area on the, on the gold star slide is even bigger, right?
Yeah. I think I'm understanding the question, how that, something that will clarify that.
Well, I, so let me go back to the class size reduction because I think, I always have considered that to be a misnomer when it's almost impossible for us to do that. So why are we, why are we exerting 35%, almost 35% of our effort on doing the thing that's probably the thing that we cannot do?
Why do you think it's something we cannot do?
How do you reduce class size?
Higher more teacher, with 1.2.
But we only have, we only have so much money and we can't keep them and everything and all the things that we don't control at this point. So how do we reduce class size?
So to date, Nancy, this has kept our class sizes from increasing. It hasn't actually reduced them, keep them from increasing because we are maintaining what should have been maintained by the general fund.
Michelle, I think that's the missing piece of information that if people weren't here prior to the last couple of years, they wouldn't know that we're maintaining that with those extra dollars. And it goes to Mark's question about the backfill that was necessary to the general fund just to maintain. So maybe talk about that a little bit so that there's clarity on the class size reduction as well as Mark's question.
Yeah, let me go back.
The new thing, reductions, like you were saying, it's a misnomer.
It might be maintenance, yeah.
But, yeah, it's maintain.
It really is, man.
Yeah, okay, we can make a change there.
Because for 14, 15 years, we've been dealing with increased class sizes for, so holding, holding the line feels like it complements somehow.
Right, so that, so that makes total more sense than I did. Okay, maybe.
Sorry, I think the terms are also intended to align with what came down from the state as the appropriate buckets of money. So it's not that we necessarily just have free reign to change the classifications. These were the buckets of money allowable through the state. And so these are how we've allocated based on those.
That makes sense.
Student investment, that was only, only able to be used in specific ways.
But in real terms, that's really about maintaining where we are, so that don't increase inside. And yeah, I'm sure, thank you.
Michelle, can I add something or ask a question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, and I know we've been having a, kind of a discussion here about labels and everything. So I understand kind of what, what you're talking about and everything like that. But if this was a slide that was going out to the general public or something like that, I think they would have a very different perception on that class size reduction. So while I understand that that's maybe the label that you, that you've kept, you know, because the state uses it or feds use it or something like that, we might want to be careful about that if that's something that's, because I would have a very different perception of that class size reduction versus class size maintenance, for example.
Yeah, I think the challenge in communicating about that is that it, the class size or the, the teaching staff will reduce from the general fund, which would have increased class size. But when we paid for them with the SIA, then it's just maintain the same level. So I definitely appreciate all of the discussion around it and I'm happy to bring back something that illustrates more clearly and including a change of word. I feel like it has to be both in order for this to satisfy in order for this to satisfy our state requirements of interacting with the community. Um but I I definitely think that we can make that more clear.
When I I think that's okay. I mean, if we have to use both, then um for for the reasons that you're describing and stuff like that, I think that's fine. But I I think it's okay to to have that other aspect to it, too, so.
Sure.
To Michelle, to Christine's point, you're also blocking to a new board member who didn't have the benefit of that prior uh context of us trying to maintain and not increase the class size. So I think the context behind that, so if it does go out of public, I think we have to be conscious of the context part of it as well.
Yeah, I I would agree.
Absolutely. Thanks, you guys.
I was just going to say really quickly, um if we're talking about this, one option might be to like, I guess, define our terms when we're talking about class size reduction, like maybe not necessarily cut the label entirely, but just have like a sidebar where we're saying our classes have been increasing, this money is being used to maintain them, like making that explicit as part of our presentational material so that it's clear, not only for those of us who are on the board or on the budget committee, but also anybody who might be watching and is trying to follow along with the process.
Thank you, Seth.
Erica?
Yeah, I I also had a question. Can you hear me okay? Um I think it's been a while, too, since we set uh had that engagement with community to find out, like, where should we be spending it? How do we circle back to say this is this is what is the rate of a return on our investment on whichever buckets, however we decided to break it up? Which one is is making a big impact on what the original, what the goal was of this Student Success Act? Was to, you know, make sure that we're closing the opportunity gap and that we're um, you know, ensuring that students are graduating on time. So I'm wondering if there's also something that we can do to kind of have the accountability piece of like which ones have been successful? Uh and then reevaluating again, like, should we look at how we're structured? And I know that's kind of, I was thinking like this has also been impacted by COVID, because a lot of these things, you know, we weren't able to do or maybe moved around differently. So I'm just, I'm putting that out there in case anybody else feels like it's been a while since we thought we looked at how we spent it, and maybe we should look at that again. And thinking about that point with like the class, for example, if we want to talk to our legislature or reps and say, here's how much goes of it to maintain, and this is the rate of return that we're seeing or the impact that we're seeing, like, we need to have some ability to show them why this is um this is just hitting such a big core of our general fund just to maintain that level, and it's not meeting the essence of what the the spirit of what the 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 initiative was.
It'll be big this, right? I mean, it is the we're in the short session now, but the full session starts in January. So so it'll be big getting our duck to being well-prepared to speak to legislators this uh this fall as we get into the January session.
For next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a ton of internal work happening, you know, as we look at our programs for for this year um and into next year. So there's a ton of those dis- discussions happening internally. The grant program from the ODE level requires us our our this year and next year, they kind of can ride under the same application based on the input that we receive. But as we go into the next biennium, it's a requirement that we go out and do all of that rigorous work again, that we share what we've learned with the community, um and that we get that input and any kind of redirection uh that we need to do at that time. So there is a a couple of different um levels of management of these funds. So I don't want you guys to think that they're they're not being looked at carefully and reported out on. I know that um we Travis and I worked together on a quarterly report to the state. We say exactly what we've spent um at progress, how we're doing. Um and quite frankly, twenty one or twenty twenty one was kind of a sad reporting year for us, because there were big holes in everything that we had promised our community, so to speak, that we would do if we received these funds, and then we didn't receive the funds. So there's going to be reporting available, and it's a requirement of the grant that it comes back to the community. So thank you for the interest and support.
Michelle, can I just chime in too to support the conversation and Erica's question? I think that was Erica. I can't see, but um we we did last summer, also in spring, we re-engaged with our different parent advisory committees. And we formed a team to look at the data like related to how many students are being served with increased instructional time through our um expansion of after-school programs. Um how many more students are receiving direct supports from a mental health therapist, either by a student support and wellness counselor or by a partner in the community? And we were trying to verify in in the light of the environment that we're living in, like with COVID, with everything that's been going on in our community and in our country over the last two years, are these still the areas of investment that we need to be making? And the over and over again, we were reaffirmed by principals, teachers, parents, students, that these are the areas of investment we should continue to look at. And um so I just want the group to know that we are tracking the data on what is our return on investment. And also in um continuing the engagement process, it just doesn't feel like it did when we were all together in the library or in the boardroom. It happens in smaller Zoom meetings and in smaller conversations that probably aren't visible to everybody. But I'm happy to share that. As Michelle said, we'll move forward with another e- even a more unified input process as we move forward with the way that the state of Oregon is requiring the new continuous improvement process to happen. So I'm happy to keep you in touch with that process, too. Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks, Travis.
Money over Zoom, yeah, right?
I missed that, I'm sorry.
I did, too.
I just said it's hard to hand out monopoly money over Zoom.
I know. We had included the picture in another draft of this. We included the monopoly money, because that was such a popular activity with hands-on, having to make tough decisions if you have a finite amount of cash. What do you do? And um, yeah, we'd love to be able to do that type of hands-on learning together and uh community engagement in the future.
All right, I think I only have one more slide about SIA. Boom, there it is, year twenty two, twenty three again. Um that funding level is a little bit higher. Um and it is enough to cover the increasing costs to maintain what we're doing with the fully funded um services this year. So it's a summary slide that talks about um what this, what information improves this. So just like Travis said, our con- continuous improvement plan, student data, staff, um parent group and community feedback. Also, we're going to be moving through a pretty rigorous strategic planning process. And that's going to inform our continuous improvement plan. So all of that is going to um re-up and help us um steward these funds through the district. We have, again, class size caseload reduction. I will find a different way to say that. Uh but you can see at a granular level what that supports in terms of the actual folks doing that work. And then
Michelle?
Yes.
When is when is your strategic planning process? Did you uh is that coming up for the the next school year or?
Yeah, we s- we started it and then we put a pause on it. So I'm going to ask Beth to maybe um Beth, can you share about that?
So um we went through an RFP process and did identify a strategic plan consultant. And uh right now, we're just finalizing dates for the work that's going to start this spring and continue through uh next February. And then by next March, we'll have a draft plan and
Okay.
adopt by March and implement by July one, so that um the new plan can inform our budget process next year.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. And uh Hugo, can you advance? We've had a lot of questions, but I'd love to take down some more if you guys have them.
Thank you, Michelle. We know we got a lot of questions for a few years.
We look all good here. I I can't see hands online, but if anybody wants to chime in online, I can.
You guys are always welcome to follow up with me later, too, if you if something comes to you later when you're reflecting on this presentation.
Thank you. Thanks, Michelle, as always. Well prepared. All right, uh our next topic is to discuss the superintendent's evaluation and contract timeline. And I'm sure it was just happenstance or coincidence that Erica got out of the chair before it was a contract here. So uh
She she did it one time.
Did you? I thought it was Lisa had to do it.
Oh, maybe it was Lisa.
I think it was Lisa. The review. The review, but apparently also this year, we need a a head nod from the board, I guess, to allow, uh did you talk to Lisa about how we did this last time?
Yeah, I I have a plan.
Oh, maybe. Go for that.
So it is a superintendent evaluation season, just the best time of the year. Um and so here's here's how this works. It starts fairly early because it's a pretty it just have a long process. So on March fifteenth, what happens is that um we will have great difficulty using the person that uh facilitates this process for us. And that will be the night that I share with you my self-reflection. It's usually kind of lengthy, because there's a lot of things that go on. And so I'll be sharing that with you on the evening of March fifteenth. And at the same time, um have the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have. And the facilitator will actually go through the process as well and how information will be gathered. Um during the week of March sixteenth to twenty, you can see there that there's evaluation worksheets that are online. And you'll have a a week-long window to get that done. And then that gives the consultant an opportunity to gather all of that information and put it in a a format that is digestible by you. And then that information will be shared back with you. Um based on that information, then, uh Mark, as the board chair, he will um prepare an evaluation report or a summary letter that he will post for you to take a look at. And um and then that will trigger the process to um provide it more just an evaluation report to the board from our facilitator. And if you're not going to ask questions of Mark and make suggestions after you see that draft. Um the next thing that happened publicly is on April twenty sixth, there's an organized statutes around the the evaluation letter actually has to be read in a regular session. So um super awkward, but it's a it's one of the requirements. So that happens on April twenty sixth. And then in the background of that, really beginning in March, what will happen is um well, probably probably this evening or the next month or so, the board will empower Mark to start having conversations with uh Brian Hungerford, who is the labor attorney for the district, as well as my representative, to start contract conversations. So what happens every three years is the contract is revisited. And then there's these conversations going on in that. And because Mark has been empowered that board, he then has the authority to work with the attorney and to uh put a contract together and to um to put a put a contract together. And then that comes to you on May twenty fourth for approval. So that's how that goes.
And what what does the approving need to talk to Brian look like?
You know, that is basically just uh you asking Eric for the approval to move forward to go to move forward with the conversations. I'm probably won't start in for another four or five weeks, but we could start, actually, you could start when I was tomorrow.
See what I can do.
Yeah.
I'll talk to my boss. Uh so is everybody okay with me working with uh our labor attorney to craft that new contract, Mike?
I just want to know, does it actually fall?
I, we don't believe so. It's more one of those head nod things where like, yeah, all right, it's not it's not it's not something on which we have to vote.
The the approval of the contract is
Yeah.
And that happened.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I guess traditionally, it's been the role of the board chair to work with the labor lawyer and my representative to formulate the new contract.
So he does have representation in the process?
I can. Um the the last, um I've only done that one other time. And it is the the thing that um one of the reasons that I have someone else do this on my behalf is uh they have access to all of the contracts across the state. And they can provide a better comparison. I don't really have the ability to kind of pull that information. And so this provides a comparison that I would
So far, past board chairs have any wisdom that they can share at some point? I'd be open to that. Erica, Lisa. Hey. Any other questions regarding the superintendent's evaluation, the contract and timeline? All right. Our next item is that we return to a discussion of the calendar, and the proposed calendar is in your packet. I believe Connaught leads this discussion.
I do. So I'm going to have to go um project the calendar I created. In years of panic, talk through steps of what I have to look at based on um feedback that you provided me on January twenty fifth, to kind of go back to the drawing board and look at how we can adjust winter break to two full weeks. And so um looking at converting December nineteenth and the twentieth is what we have from the first draft. It was easy to take the twentieth and convert Tuesday, January third into a student contact day. So that was quite easy to do. Then we had to go back and kind of look at um based on feedback, based on kind of um some of the things we've done in the past. And one of the things I'm hearing a lot of feedback from is to create an end of the year that is intact. So we want to keep the end of the year ending with students on June fifteenth, Thursday. And then Friday, the sixteenth, will be the last day for license. So that was uh something that uh is taking that into consideration. So with the nineteenth as another date that I had to look at, I went to look at um where we could adjust uh the calendar at the start of the year. And so looking after our Monday through Wednesday, new teacher staff in service, we have our in-service for staff um that would be looked at as Monday, the twenty ninth, Tuesday, the thirtieth. And then Thursday, the first, and Friday, the second. Which puts us as a student contact day for family connections on Wednesday, August thirty first. So that would afford us the time for us to connect with families in advance of school starting on the sixth. And there was feedback um from very folks in regards to the value add of that to have time to provide resources, resources to connect. And then we would start school with our first through sixth grade, seventh and ninth, because we received feedback from our secondary administrators that they wanted to start the seventh and ninth graders kind of on their own on the sixth, Tuesday. And then the following day, we kindergarten, eighth and tenth through twelfth, joining them. That affords us to have so we take the Friday, which had been a non-contract day on the second, and that Friday provides us these things. One, two full weeks of winter break. And it also affords us to end the year intact on the fifteenth and sixteenth of June.
And really, what would that have been? Two full weeks and a day?
Two full weeks and a day. Thank you, Mark. Yes. So um what would happen next is just kind of like bringing forward an adjusted calendar. And we bring that forward on February twenty second for first reading. And then the board would have the opportunity to adopt and vote on March fifteenth.
So the the new idea is not represented here, though?
No, I didn't bring that, because I needed to have a discussion with you based on your feedback from our our previous conversation. So I wanted to kind of open it up for discussion based on what I've shared.
So one of the sort of primary differences, it seems to me, is that the the day we use for family connections moves from after Labor Day to before.
Yes.
And and that move, moving it before Labor Day, gets us the ninth, the week of the nineteenth and the week of the twentieth.
And it's correct.
And then we would return to school twenty twenty three on Monday or Tuesday. The second, we would return on, it's the same as this.
January 3rd.
Oh, this is.
No, no, no.
Yes, January, January 3rd would be.
January, okay, okay. So, okay. And so this does not, once again, this one is not for like what we're discussing. But we do want to have a full two weeks at the end of the year. And what you're saying is moving the contact day from post-September to August 31st gets us what we need.
Yeah.
And really, the way the calendar slides, we have this exact same problem that the first January is on Monday. Right?
Right. Why would we change it? The idea is the others.
Yeah, I'm saying that we're sort of setting a precedent that will be useful, not just, that will be, we, we may end up reusing the same, if, if this works the way we intended to, it would be something we would consider for next, for next year too.
For the purpose of making sure we have a full two weeks at the end of the year, right?
Yeah, the, the prize comes with the legal holiday being on the Monday.
Yes.
Do we know what the other districts are doing here? Well, no, we're kind of at the forefront. I think the only other district that has put the calendar out is Beaverton and theirs is would end their school year on Friday, the 16th. They would subject two full weeks, but then the teachers would have to come back on the 20th. But we're not asking our teachers. Not based on this updated.
Never hope the weather is gonna do what you're.
Yeah. Let's not ask.
We've had snow days in February before.
I know, but let's not.
I've done it. We'll take your eye off the cloud yet.
I, I guess. By the way, Kona, how many, how many winter days do we have to play with? With the proposed, not this, but proposed.
You mean winter break is up here?
No, no, no. How many? Inclined, sorry, inclement weather days that we have to play with?
We have two at the end of this school year. On the 20th and the 21st.
Whoa.
Not on this, yeah, not, not, yeah, on the 20th and 21st.
If we, if we have inclement weather days and we decide to make them up.
Right. Got it.
So we don't have any inclement weather days that we are needing to take into account for right now?
No. Nothing.
I, I seem to remember, I definitely remember we lost a whole week, but there was a, there was a, there was one year where we had this two or three day, two days maybe, and the board decided, and as normal, we didn't.
We have our, our calendar, we're able to meet the requirements for instructional hours. And so we have, we have some weight over there. So we, there's been years where we've made that, and there's been other years where we have that.
And I'm always wondering now in our virtual hybrid environment, like what's the future of inclement weather? If we could just say, hey, we're sticking to online today because it's too dangerous.
I feel like I've heard that before and it feels right-ish, but also we have a day built in for teachers that have to prepare lessons to, so when we have to move a class to CDL, the teachers have a day to prepare to do that. So I, I feel I feel unfair to spring on a teacher that morning and say, okay.
Yeah, I heard, I heard that. I was thinking about that, just like, hey, but then we don't have to make them up. And then not all students take their licenses on every day. That's true.
Oh, yeah, students definitely have their calendar.
And also I know that that policy is just super unpopular with students. Sorry, that was loud, but just from a student perspective, everyone who's heard that idea has hated it for what that's worth.
I know that having a snow day is like the highlight of it. I relive the snow day.
So Kona, what do we have to do to allow you to then move forward with the proposed? Which is nothing.
Nothing today. Should, should just make it, we'll have to prove it next session. And all right, we do take action for regular sessions with the calendar.
Yeah.
So I feel, so we shall maybe.
Don't we have it? I thought we had it out for like a little bit for people to see it.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was proposing is that typically if we come back and adjust it, then we would have to give another first reading opportunity for people. Because we haven't, you know, done something like this before. So my proposal was to bring forward the idea of the two full weeks ending the year, doing the family connections day on August 31st. And then bring in an adjusted first reading of a calendar if we're adjusting it to February 22nd.
Good.
Then the following month, March 15th.
We just have one. Right. And our same.
And it still needs to be in the policy guidance. And I think that's when we get the most feedback is like when the calendar is out and everything like. Then we'll see if there's any need to, you know, like.
So NBLs have, please chime in, but it feels to me like we're gonna hear a little bit about, you're starting before Labor Day. Well, it's a lot of that connection happens, or only, or can happen, or only if the teacher and parent work it out. But so I mean, it feels okay to me to keep those two weeks intact. Like it feels like a valid trade-off. Keep those two weeks intact.
And we need to say though that it's starting before Labor Day, but that's for the family connection. It's not in class, you know, student class. Yeah, which usually is like a phone call or virtual meeting or something where, yeah, there'll be a, there'll be a platform to get that information.
We're.
I find those family connection days like fantastic. Like the two times that I, the last two years that we've had them, I really found a lot of value in them with being able to talk to my daughter's teacher beforehand and kind of get an idea of what we're doing for her. Cause it's like, it was always like, it makes sense that that first day, kind of like, don't know what to expect, don't know where to class me, you know, you just question a lot of things. So that, that family connection day, I think is something that we should keep.
Did you go to the building for your, did you go to the building for yours or do it virtually?
Virtually, yeah. And so it's either virtual or, you know, phone calls. There's this kind of difference on what your preference is, but it's great. You got to see your, you know, student teacher and beforehand and, you know, just knowing like, okay, this is gonna be what the rules are. This is how we're gonna have the kids enter, like just, you know, getting all that and then having contact information and all that. And it's been great. So I, I do really find a whole lot of value in that.
This is the feedback we got, right? Like that people loved it, so we kept it for this year. Lisa, are you there? Did you do yours virtually or go into the building?
We did ours remotely. We did a phone call for hours. It was also a workday for the, the teaching our family. And, and it was just wonderful. Yeah, they, they kind of get to know all the, the core information they need. And you get to share lots of lovely things about your kids and it really does help to build that connection. And it also helps later, like for example, Lily's classroom had to go into a closure. And the teacher already knew what resources and support we needed to make that transition work for Lily. So it saved a lot of time in that transition as well.
Thank you. It's just interesting. I just want to bring you a perspective from a different state. You've never lived in any other place. This is an anomaly. This is the first time I have ever lived in a state that did not start prior to Labor Day. So while it might feel uncomfortable for you, for the rest of the country, they've been doing it for eons, unfortunately. For example, the state of Georgia, teachers come back the first week of August. It's kind of crazy. So I just want to give you perspective. And then while it might feel a little bit uncomfortable, there had been one single tiny day of interaction, whereas most schools are in school two to three weeks into before Labor Day. So just a perspective to consider.
All right, I will look forward. Thank you.
Any questions on the calendar? We're good, right?
Thank you.
Thanks for the creative efforts there. I can't imagine what would it be six years ago? It probably happened, something like that, right? Can't imagine what we did. All right, our next topic is the naming process for the new school under construction in South Hillsboro. I think Casey leads this conversation.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. In your packet on page nine is a detail of our current naming process. I just wanted to bring this back to the board to get some feedback. We will need to be starting that process this spring. And what we have outlined here is a very similar process to what we utilized when we named that Follow the Ridge a couple of years ago. Basically getting a task force together with community, students, administrators, staff, other representatives to start meeting and then begin to identify different groups and getting the word out to gather feedback for potential names and then start meeting and then seeing that back and narrowing it down through utilizing the community. And then similar to what we did previously was give an update to the board specifically at the board retreat. And in September, Superintendent Scott would bring that, those names to the board for a first reading and hopefully adoption a month later at the next meeting at the regular session. So I just wanted to get everybody's eyes on this and have feedback if this is the path, we're on the right path again as we begin this process likely pretty soon after spring break. Are there any questions? I know you guys have seen this before that I can answer or things we need to have considered?
Nancy has a question.
Hi, Casey. This is Malik and I's first time through this process. So I was wondering, does the name committee also consider the logo and/or? Is that passed up?
Yeah. They do it, we do that towards the end. So really, once we get the, the names kind of narrowed down, we begin that process. And that'll be more student-driven. So for example, how we'll utilize this is we'll, we'll likely use the students that are currently at Rosedale who likely have an address in the vicinity of where the new school is and will probably use the students there once we start to develop the mascot and colors to, to let them go through a process to recommend and suggest those types of things and bring back to the board.
So the committee, the committee only handles the name and then we do a separate committee for the mascot, which kind of happens at the end. But we get different people involved? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, kind of. The, the naming task force is more broadly utilizing adults and community members. The mascot and colors is more student-driven. And that's where we'll get feedback from students at Rosedale, most likely, because they're, they're the border school. And a lot of those students, half of those students, in theory, will go to the new school ES29. So that'll be a student-driven process.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Casey, could you give a, just an overview of what the boundary process looks like? I know that's a different timeline, but just basically a.
A question.
Oh, very good.
Yeah, so what, what we had, we did last go-around was again, looking into the future. Once we have the name of the school, right at the end of 2022, first part of 2023, we'll run a process. Last time Adam Stewart ran this and likely will be similar where we started working as a district staff to gather a committee together to start looking at what the new boundaries would be for ES29. Last time at Hot Follow the Ridge, it was pretty simple because there wasn't a lot of conflicts with where the boundaries were. This one could be like that. You never kind of know where that's gonna go. And then throughout some community meetings and a process eventually towards, you know, the springtime next year will hopefully land on the boundaries for ES29.
My recollection is that a board member or two sits on the redistricting committee, but not on the renaming committee. Is that about right?
Correct. That's how we've done it historically.
So we make the decision, but we're not the brainstorming or say, comes up, okay.
Truth is.
Right. Yeah. And part of that thought is just from a, like a historical perspective is, you know, if you're involved in the committee, sometimes people get attached to certain names. This will allow the process to kind of take place. And then the board to respond and react to a narrow list and look at all of the information. And it's worked really well.
And then the, the other reason that works is because the names are forward to the board. The board doesn't necessarily have to select one of those names. They could, they could do their own work and have a choice. I don't know if we've had that happen over the last several years, but it's definitely a possibility.
Mark Watson Elementary sounds pretty good to me. Just saying.
It, it doesn't meet the quality, it doesn't meet the policy mark.
It's kind of been a Denmark Watson somewhere.
We'll put a little parentheses, not correct.
All right. Any other questions for Casey? My recollection is things went pretty swimmingly at Follow the Ridge, so I'm pretty happy with the, with the process you guys used there, so.
The other thing is on, on your logo question, when we're building the new school, we have, we're fortunate that we have designers that have been hired to work inside the school. So we've got all kinds of access to professionals as well. It's not, you know, just a student sketching something out. It's, it's a process.
All right. Moving on, I really look forward to the day when COVID-19 update is no longer an agenda item, but. But now it is.
Quite good. Actually, I'm doing, I'm doing this one. And this is actually pretty brief because our last set of guidance that came out was just yesterday.
Yeah.
And take, we, before we make any big declarations or involve you in the decision-making, we just need some time to consider exactly what's going on there. So here's, here's the part that you need to know. I think I, I shared most of this with you yesterday, but on, on March 31st is when, and that's right after spring break, we'll be in a situation where the decision around mask wearing or universal mask wearing, that becomes a local decision. And it sounds simple, right? And it is, well, according to some of the responses we get, it, it should be simple. And that, that certainly isn't the case because there's so many things that play into that. So let's say, for example, we were to say we make the decision that there is no need to wear a mask. It is optional at this point. That, that has some ramifications as well. So for example, the, the definition of exposure would change if kids weren't wearing a mask. And what that means is that we would have kids that would have presumed exposure and they would be out of school longer than they currently are. Because right now, they're wearing masks, exposure definition covers that. So that would be one thing that could happen. That could result in more kids out of school for a longer period of time. Doesn't mean it will, but it's just one of the things that we need to think through. The other thing that we wouldn't be able to do is utilize tests to stay if we don't have universal masking. And so we and it would likely increase the need for additional contact tracing as well. And I'm, I'm not saying that to set people up or, hey, we're not, we're holding tight with the mask. And that is not the case. I'll just to say that we need to consider all of those things as we make this decision over the next eight weeks or so. So, so really that's where we are. We, the other thing we need to think about is we need to consider our labor partners in this discussion and making sure that our staff members remain safe as well. So in the coming weeks, we'll. So in the coming weeks, we'll have greater clarification. We'll have the opportunity to consider what this all means. And we will receive additional information and clarification typically from a COVID-19 usually after something like this comes out a week or so later, we get additional clarification. And that is, that is always helpful as well. The other thing that I should mention, we, we're also looking at athletics and activities. At this time, we've got some pretty specific restrictions in place right now when it comes to the number of people that can be in the gym. And as we see Omicron has reached its peak and is headed down pretty sharply, we will revisit that over the next couple of days and make some decisions about what that means for us and what it will mean in lead play. Do we have the staffing available to monitor the stands and the additional folks that would be in there? So those are some of the things that are going to be considered the next couple, over the next couple of days in terms of athletics and activities. And over the next several weeks, when it comes to the masking decision that will be coming your way probably in March. More to come on that.
I, I think I, I mentioned you say OD, OD and like us having that decision. But what is a component of the county and the county health?
Yeah, great question. So the expectation is that we consult with the county and we, we have that conversation with them.
And right now, are we, are we still happily consulting with them like monthly? Or how is our relationship?
Meet with them on a very regular basis. There hasn't been, because the, there was a mask requirement that has been steadfast over the last several months. We haven't had to reach a number of decisions with them around this. But we do consult with them on a weekly basis. Travis, this would be a good time for Travis to chime in. This is, he just met with them yesterday. And so. Have a good day, all of us, Brian. Could you share your thoughts?
And Mike, you were doing such a great job. I was hoping to dodge this one, but yeah, we, we met with them yesterday. And also, you know, our contact tracing team and our nurses report to them sometimes daily just to track cases and where we're closing a classroom for temporary distance learning, et cetera. So I can predict in the next month, we'll be meeting with them weekly to decide what their stance is going to be and they're coordinating with Multnomah County. So there's a lot at play here in the metro area, so we'll track that and let you know.
And before the Omicron surge. Omicron, Omicron, what's their? Right, I mean, much of the CDC guidance was around that you can't make a rule in Mississippi. Same words, I mean, was really rely on your local health officials and the best we have is Washington County.
Yeah, and Washington County continues to be the local health authority that has the jurisdiction to help us with like pandemic outbreaks. We use the example of norovirus years ago. Or if there's some sort of a contaminant in the air or water, they would be the people who could help us stay safe. And so they, they do have statutory authority in Oregon to make rules around how to keep us safe.
Questions for Mike or Travis? I know they're probably incredibly busy, but is there any chance we could try to engage Washington County Public Health for our March 15th meeting? That seemed too out of the ordinary. And they, they came to us at some point in the pandemic. I remember them speaking to us fairly early on, right?
Yeah, and I thought that at that time we had also talked about like that being more operational stuff, which is not really our space to be in as board members. So we have kind of left it at like. You all communicate with them.
Yes. Yeah, that drives me crazy. Yeah, all right.
I do think that we will have some direction from that by that time that we can share.
How is that?
That's what's happened in the past. We'll see if that remains.
So. Yeah, I'll bet they're providing guidance. I'm kind of my base, I meant OD is providing guidance as well. I, we hope, we hope that's true. Yes.
And again, for perspective, you're not the only larger institution or organization that will do this. The same will affect flying tasks as we get special events to discuss this. And HRA, HR folks on it as well. And this impacts thousands eventually across the state as well. Not just the district. So there's a lot of experts that will have more advice in the next coming weeks.
All right, more to come.
All right. We're done. Look at that, just about. Discussion time. I've seen staff, do we have any of the other students with us? All right, Seth, would you like anything to say?
I would, and then I might be stalling for half a second because I think Michelle has some things that she would like me to say on her behalf because she can't be here today. But I'll see if she's able to get me those in time. I think what I'd mostly like to say with my little bit of time here today is thank you to everyone who is incredibly supportive of me after our last meeting. I've had multiple people from the community and the board reach out to me and express their support and it meant a lot more than I can ever say. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you. I know the second semester, the start of which has been an interesting time for everyone that we're all still trying to get back on our feet. But I think that there is a positive energy in our schools as we're moving into the second semester of the year. And I think things are doing as well as can be said, given the pandemic, which has always been good news to hear. I know that times have been tough, but I think that we're be doing a really, really good job of pulling through, all things considered. And I am again thankful to the hard work of all of the staff, of all of the, of all the staff, both licensed and classified, who are showing up to work every day to make sure that our schools are still able to run. And also thankful to the students who are still trying their best despite this being all, to use the word that we all hate by this point, an unprecedented year. So I think a hearty round of congratulations is in order for everybody as we're moving into the second semester. And I am going to, okay. Um, would it be okay if Megan or if Michelle gets back to me? Sorry, before the end of the meeting, if I hop back up to say what she had to say? Just giving her a couple more minutes?
I'll give her a shot.
Huh? Sorry.
Yes, we will try.
Cool, thank you.
Next up is Mike.
I actually have shared everything, feels like we just met. Actually, I will share this, I have the opportunity to go to two different schools. And it is, it's a challenge for sure. It feels more normal than not right now when you go to a school. And that is something that I haven't been able to say in a long time. But over the last three weeks or so, when you're out in the school, it feels, it feels good. Challenges for sure, but it feels so much better. And like we've settled into a routine that is more positive and more productive and predictable as well. Yes, I would say that. And I should say it's National Counselor Week. Our counselors have gone above and beyond for the, for the last 23 months or so. It is remarkable what they do. And as we all know, the, the student needs has increased pretty substantially over, over this time. And the work that they're doing to meet those needs while at the same time assisting with operational aspects around the school is just so appreciated. So thanks to them as well.
And Big Seth?
I do in fact have something. Michelle would like me to read on her behalf. Hello, I'm sorry, I couldn't be at the board meeting today. I hope you all have been doing well and staying healthy. I really hope that coronavirus only goes down from here and that we can go back to normal school soon. I'm not sure if the school board specifically can do much about this, but I've been thinking a lot about this recently, talking to both peers and teachers. There's a general sense of apathy from students and teachers. Good practices and hard work from teachers and students, especially from teachers and staff feel unnoticed. Many of the arts, football, extracurricular activities don't feel as supported or seen as they could be. And then school feels somewhat lonely. Glencoe isn't the place that I once knew and loved. And I fear that best teachers, the ones who are most invested in students and making the community better are feeling burnt out beyond their limits. I apologize for the break. She is literally still typing as I speak. With so many teachers wanting to leave, there's lost culture and lost. Well. Sorry. And lost school identity. And I think that's about where the point she was getting to was, which I'll leave her to cut it off from here. But that's what Michelle had to offer.
Thank you for conveying that message. I will say, I'm pretty sure Haley is not here because she's testifying in a house committee right now. So at least I encourage her to do so. Yeah, all right. All right. You've got four near to online. Why don't we start here? Sheen, welcome back. How will you start?
Happy to. It is, it feels really good to be back in a room with people again after weeks of isolation. Prove and have hit our family, including, I think, including our little one who just had samples for like a week. But just really grateful to be back again. And just want to acknowledge a lot of the communication we're receiving from parents and community members just about a lot of the angst with the mask mandate and everything. And wanting to let people know, we hear you. And we will absolutely be working with our global health authorities and public partners to, to make sure that we come to a sound decision. Other than that, just really grateful to be healthy and back to see everyone again.
Thank you. Moni, you have anything, you like that this evening?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Just wanted to say good evening to everyone. And once again, thanks to everyone, the staff for the presentations tonight and for the updates. And I don't really have anything else to add tonight. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Did you hear you, anything you'd like to add tonight?
No, not really. I mean, that's who attended the Pathway Center opening. That was a highlight of the week. That was great. Happened this year. I had asked them that. So that was great too. It's good work. Yeah. Thanks, everyone, for the presentation, for the information, for everybody's hard work in making this all happen.
Interject some context. Stan Miller is the person for whom Miller Education Center is the entity that attends graduations. So a few of us have had a chance to meet him at, at that event each year. We did that first. Lisa, do you have anything you want to add tonight?
Just a, a big thank you to all the school counselors. You should get more than a week of appreciation. But happy National School Counselor Week, everyone, and good night.
You. Erica, do you have anything like that?
I also attended the opening with Yadira. She did an amazing job as all of our staff and administrators and everybody. It was so great to be in a grand opening event and a moment of celebration. I think to discuss point, if there's the ability to create more of those feelings and moments of community and celebration and thinking about, especially with the weather being nicer, coming, you know, the spring and that showing up, that there is an opportunity for us to, to have more of that. And I just think so much of the things that we used to do, you know, like our parade and like our, our fairs and like the covered areas of the, of the schools and all the like booths and gathering and just all of those community building activities. And I'm wondering as with search, you know, the numbers are going down and, and how we're just learning to live with COVID. And how do we start bringing those, those things back as well? So I just, I'm just pondering on that tonight. And thank you Seth for, for bringing that and Michelle for her thoughts around that. And then I also started, thank you all for your vote on becoming OSB Vice Chair this year. I've started my chairmanship of our Legislative Policy Committee. So that's going to be the work that we were just mentioning about what, what are we planning on advocating for in the long recession of 23? And so just starting to think about all the questions that I'm asking about like, hey, around our budget and all that, it's just learning more and more about how do we do that effectively? And a lot of districts don't have lobbyists like us. We don't have also a local levy. So our board members tend to be those advocates and lobbyists, personally, if you will, on behalf of our students in our district to try to advocate for that change. So a lot of learning, but it's also really great work. And I'm just happy to be doing that this year. And also just thank you to staff that continue to, you know, come in, stay in and out, making this school year possible for students that both licensed and classified just appreciate all of their work that they do. And maybe one takeaway, Mike, too, just thinking when you were mentioning about going in to visit. And we haven't been able to do that as like going into schools and doing that. And before it was usually just emailing the principal and saying, hey, but if board members want to do that now, like what, what would be maybe the changes to it? Or how would we think about doing that? And, you know, not that, there's something to share in the board update, like.
Okay.
What would be the right protocol for us?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. It feels like if you ask, they'd be, oh, sure, come on up. But you know, it's putting extra pressure on the data that we just want to do. So are we getting close to the point where it wouldn't crush somebody to have a board member in the building?
And I would add to that, the Pathway Center.
Oh, yeah.
An opportunity to talk about it. I know I, I missed it. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Nancy, do you have any to add tonight?
I do not.
Just me. Mike and I had a chance to speak with some students at a listening session at Hill High, which was very enlightening and informative. They were freshmen and sophomores, I think. Correct, right, freshman, so I mean, a freshman would have gone home in the seventh grade, that's spring break. They come back to freshman year high school. So overwhelmingly, it seemed, you know, they didn't feel ready to come back. And maybe the line of the day for me was one of the students saying, yeah, in person, I just wasn't ready for in person. You can't just go on another screen and Google the test answer.
Oh, jeez.
Right?
That wasn't my favorite line.
I didn't say my favorite line, I said the line of the day. No, not my favorite line, yeah. But like it was pretty memorable that. He was willing to share that, so.
Your kids are honest.
Yeah. You know, focusing on the social emotional health of our students seems like it still needs to be a priority. And I understand how important our content standards are. But maybe the Oregon Department of Education or the US Department of Education will start to revisit at some point with the, the idea that reading at third grade level is an indicator of success. Well, what if you're a third grader who hasn't been in school or a fifth grader who didn't, went home at spring break at third grade? So how do we, how do we manage those expectations for content while still ensuring that our students are prepared for the world and dealing with other people? I have a lovely intersection tomorrow morning of my volunteer job this one and my day job. For those of you who don't know, we're going to center some legislative office where I, Michelle and I will be watching state economists present the revenue forecast in PowerPoint slides tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM. So if you're looking for something to do, I highly recommend it. I'm going to all be excited this afternoon. And I'm going to get paid to do it tomorrow, which is awesome. And then on the other side, the intersection was Paul Gill speaking to the House Education Committee today, talking about the equity journey and that. You know, students who are English as a second language are considered disadvantaged. And according to him, they graduate in Oregon, you know, 4% higher than everybody else as bilingual students. And that doesn't seem like a disadvantage. So just as we think about our equity journey, figuring out how we talk and just the language we use around that. And the more crippling thing was seven point. And the more crippling thing was 7.5% of black African-American boys were expelled in kindergarten. I hate to leave you with that, but that's what I'm going to leave you with. So there's work to do. We are turned.